Twenty-sixth council meeting, air five thirty. Council honour to pay respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional and original owners and continuing custodians of this land. All persons in attendance are advised that it's council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a limited period of six months. Members of the public in attendance at the meeting who do not wish their words to be recorded and or published on the website should contact a relevant council officer and advise of their wishes prior to the start of the meeting. And I guess another reminder that this meeting is being live streamed. Item one on the agenda is apologies and I have a full contingent of councillors. Item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in the item on this agenda? Do you care? Thank you, councilwoman.
Item five point four.
Yes, man, five point four also for me. Thank you. Councilor Milburn, thank you.
And then a mayor, item five point four for me as well.
And then councillor Perry, thank you. Don't make me millen- Item three point one is confirmation of minutes. Three point one point one is confirmation of minutes of the council ready to take out for September. Do I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councilor Holster, thank you. Do you have a second, then?
You do.
Councilor Laicock, thank you. Councilor Holster, thank you, too.
Four minutes, nothing further to add.
Thank you, councillor Laicock.
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Anyone else? No. Councilor Holster, call.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item three point two is public question time, as per our public question time policy. Item three point two point one, responses to questions raised at prior meetings, and there is a recommendation there on page six. Can I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councilor Perry, do I have a second, then? Our second. Councilor Milburn, thank you. Councilor Perry.
There's nothing to add, now, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Milburn. Nothing further, thank you. Thank you. Any comments, questions? Councilor Perry to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item three point two point two is questions on notice from the public, and there is a recommendation there on page seven. Do I have a mover to recommendation, please?
So moved.
Councilor Perry, thank you. Do I have a second, then?
You do, ma'am.
Councilor Laicock, thank you. Councilor Perry.
Adequate responses, now, ma'am, so a procedural, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Laicock.
Nothing to add.
Any other comments, questions? Councilor Perry to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried. Motion's carried unanimously. Item three point two point three is questions without notice from the public. And this month we have made the decision to ease back our COVID-19 restrictions, which have applied for several months in relation to public question time, and return to the practice of allowing members of the public to ask their own questions. I would ask that those of you who ask questions stand behind the line marked in front of the lectern and do not touch the lectern or the microphone. Microphone's been set up, all set to go. If you have not previously emailed a copy of your questions, a copy should be placed in the tray provided beside the lectern. So if you just pop in the tray there and staff will collect it later. I do have some questions that I've been asked to read, which I will address over this month. However, from next month, members of the public can either provide their questions on notice or attend in person to ask questions without notice as per our policy. I really would like to thank everyone for their cooperation and understanding of the restrictions that we have put in place over the previous months. Moving on, I have a question here from Jenny Clare, she's a white power of Devonport. Three questions, in fact. Is it correct that the council refused to rent the old gallery to a rent paying upmarket fashion and interior design retail business called Bourbon Wall for thirty-six thousand per annum and why? Question two is, did the council offer the old gallery with twelve months' rent free to any other organisations by an open and well advertised process? And question three, if not, by what process and for what reasons did the council choose to offer the old gallery with twelve months' rent free to rent? All I can say to those questions is that the matter has been listed on the agenda and will be dealt with as part of this meeting. Mr Russell, did you want to ask your questions or are you happy?
I'm quite happy to. Now, thank you.
You're free.
Rodney Russell, two two five Stun Street, Devonport. Who is paying the four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for the new bus stop infrastructure? Devonport City Council or state government?
Mr General Manager, I ask you-
Yeah, through you, ma'am. The bus stop infrastructure has been put in, it's been fully funded through a grant from the state government.
Thank you.
Do you mind having a moment to jot that down?
It will be noted. It will be noted, Mr Russell, as part of the minutes of this agenda.
Thank you. Sorrel Street, opposite one hundred and eleven and one hundred and thirteen. The vegetation is overgrowing the road. Who is responsible for its removal? Just this afternoon, I noted it had been cut back neatly, but I'm actually referring to having it cut back beyond the curb, which it isn't at the moment. In other words, off this road service totally.
Mr Atkins?
Yeah, through you, ma'am. Just an inspection of the area of photography just makes it a little unclear where the trees, on whose land they sit. So first of all, we'll need to investigate whether they're on the land belonging to Sabren and Shaw village or whether they're actually in the road reserve. If they're within the road reserve, it'll be council responsibility to maintain the vegetation and the trees and we'll do an inspection and any necessary work will be carried out. If the trees are causing a concern to the road reserve and they're actually originating from the Sabren and Shaw village land, then we'll take that up with the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a third question?
Yes, ma'am. Now?
Yes.
Holliman Street reconstruction. I see the new footpath as being extended around one pole, which was difficult. Who did the work and who is paying for the work to be done?
Again, Mr Atkins?
Yeah, through you, ma'am. Council's civil works crew took that project on the nineteenth of October and the council's obviously paying for the cost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Russell. And I will just remind everyone that we did change the policy to allow for three questions and five minutes straight to everyone who'd like to ask questions. So that's the others that I have listed. If there's anyone who'd like to come forward and ask my question, council, I'd ask you to do that now. Thank you, Mr Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor Rockford. Disposal of assets, item six point six, page sixty-five on this agenda. For some years, there's been a loss on the disposal of assets. Not new. When is the council going to stop selling off assets at a loss?
Mr Atkins, would you like to respond?
Yes, through you, ma'am. The loss on disposal that's listed in the financial statements rarely relates to the sale of an asset. Typically, it's to do with the disposal of writing off assets that have been replaced prior to the end of their useful life or into their theoretical life when it's been driven by other factors. So a practical example of that is, say, the Meecroft Club Rooms, which council are currently replacing. We, council made the decision to replace the rooms even though there was still some written down value in the existing club rooms. However, they were demolished, so therefore we carry that as a loss. So typically, when you see the total there for loss on disposal, it's relating to assets that have been replaced prior to the end of their theoretical life. So it will continue to be an ongoing. Council will make decisions on other factors other than just the life of the asset for different reasons.
Still hasn't answered the questions. You're not doing it, in other words. Is that what you're saying?
No, through you, ma'am. It will continue to be loss on disposal as a result of assets being demolished before, when they've still got some value left in them.
So the answer-
Certainly, it's not being driven by selling assets for less than what they're worth.
Through you, ma'am. The answer is, the council is not going to stop selling off assets at a loss. That's the answer. And I'd like, when I ask a question, I would like an answer to what I ask. Thank you.
Probably clarify that, ma'am. The loss on disposal in the financial statements this year is all to do with writing off demolished assets. The two sales that council did this year of assets, we sold two pieces of land and that's not the main driver for this write-off.
Thank you. Mr Velacott?
Thank you. Paul Velacott, eleven Cocker Place, Devonport. Mayor, this question is directed to the general manager- The Dini motion from the floor, the two thousand and twenty AGM will not be accepted. And I'll add to that, including by implication, procedural motions.
Yeah, through you, ma'am. Certainly more than having answered that question. Council introduced a policy around good governance during the year all in the interest of improving openness and transparency. And part of that was taking the view that if motions are going to be debated at the AGM, that the community and the public have a right to know what those motions are and to attend and participate. So it was on that basis that we made the decision that motions and not questions, that motions need to be provided in writing so they can be added to the agenda so that the community or we, what's being discussed. It's certainly a practice that some other councils follow and it's a practice that the Tredjra Labor Government is comfortable with. And sorry, in regard to procedural motions, the guidelines which will be coming out as part of the AGM will clarify that procedural motions and the like will still be allowed.
But yeah, in that notice, through you, ma'am, in that notice, it just says specifically and categorically that no motion will be accepted from the floor.
Did you have any other questions, Mr Velacott?
So, just in regards to that, did the general manager obtain legal advice regarding the unusual contents of the two thousand and twenty AGM notice before publishing it?
Through you, ma'am. No, we didn't get legal advice to write the notice, but we're more than comfortable with the position.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wait, did you have any other questions?
No, well-
Did you have a third question?
I've just got here, ma'am, and councillors, my question, that is question three, actually. Have you considered the code of conduct implications as well as council's obligation to act lawfully and in particular, the precarious position of the chair of the annual general meeting as requirements by the general manager?
I'm prepared to respond to that, Mr Velacott. We have sought advice from the Labor Government Division and we are comfortable with the position.
Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other questions? Mr Allen?
Thank you, ma'am. I think this question's been part answered, but anyway, we'll give it a whirl and see what this has got to say there. With reference to the notice of the annual general meeting published Saturday the twenty-fourth of October, containing substantial changes to meeting process, namely, all attendees must pre-register, despite the previously been common practice for all attendees to record their name and address on the night. All motions must be on notice with no motions from the floor being accepted, despite this not being supported by legislation or the AGM good practice guidelines. Plus, what appears to be an eight-day limit. That's from the day hard copies have been publicly available. In lieu of council stipulating fourteen days for submissions on the annual report. I just add limit there. I think we went from twenty-eight days back to fourteen and considering, I think, the annual reports are available in hard copy as of today on request. That's eight days to submit. I ask, did the general manager provide an assurance to councillors at the time that substantial changes to meeting process within the notice of annual general meeting was provided by a person who has the qualifications or experience necessary to give such advice, information or recommendations to children of section sixty-five of all African government act? It sends you quite comfortable and other councils do it. I've checked half the councils today and you might be surprised just how few actually do have notices on motion. But I'll complete that exercise. So was that provided by a person with the experience or qualifications to provide that advice to council?
Which of us specifically is, Dr Allen?
Beepa.
What are both specifically?
The content of the notice of annual general meeting, which are substantial changes to what is the norm for most councils in this state and has been the norm in the past. You mentioned a policy which apparently is still to be released.
I'm happy for Mr Jack.
Absolutely. The question is to the general manager.
Yeah, through you, ma'am. I'm just trying to move into working on what the question is.
The question is, does a properly experienced and qualified person give that advice to council?
Yeah, the answer to that is yes.
Okay.
Which is an important step of continuing to be more open and transparent. That's the goal of council that we've been focused on this year.
We'll check it at the AGM. Question two, on page nine of the October two thousand and twenty agenda in response to my question four. Council informs that the hotel owner has not requested connection between the hotel and the elevated walkway. Accordingly, will the general manager confirm if any consideration has or is being given to architectural or structural changes to the elevated walkway? And if so, why after such a protracted period of planning, design and consultation? Are there any changes to the walkway in the wind, considered, being considered, has been considered?
Yeah, through you, ma'am. Nothing that will change the looks or aesthetics or the intention of the walkway. Obviously, there's the normal designed clarifications and modifications being made from time to time. So, yeah, the walkway is being constructed as per the original documents.
So it's something we've done, but nothing that will affect the looks, the aesthetics or the intent of the walkway, sounds to me like no changes.
Through you, ma'am. We know you're a stickler, Mr Allen, for details, I need to be careful with that. But there's been some pad footings and some other tweaks to the design. But nothing that would change the overall appearance of the walkway.
Okay, that was the question. That wasn't that part of the tweet.
Did you have a third question, Mr Allen?
Yes, I do. Does council have a firm date that the problem of low standard market will recommence?
That's still in discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Allen. Were there any other questions? Oh, thank you, Mr Velacott. Were there any other questions, Mr Mills? Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mills.
Christopher Mills, fifty-two Caroline Street. I have two questions.
Thank you.
The first concerns this council's duty of care. Could the general manager please confirm that this council recognises and accepts that the Department of Premier and Cabinet, Tasmanian Government, have identified that my home, the land directly west of my home and the land immediately south of my home are all in a, quote, bushfire impact area risk present?
We will take that on notice, Mr Mills. Did you have a second question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Question two concerns an answer given by the general manager at the last meeting, twenty-first of September. I asked a question about the trade-based qualifications that staff possess in our Bori culture. The general manager responded by saying that, quote, employees have a whole range of qualifications and he didn't intend to provide details on all these, ended, quote. Respectfully, that was not what I asked. I asked specifically about accredited and formally recognised qualifications in our Bori culture. The question is, are there any staff with an accredited qualification in our Bori culture that is formally recognised by the Tasmanian Government or a university authority? And what is the exact title of that qualification and from what institution?
Thank you, Mr Mills. Again, we will take that on notice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other questions? No? Moving on. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for being careful of our restrictions that we have in place around COVID-19. Item three point three is questions on notice from councillors and their attendee at the time of preparing this report. And the same goes for planning authority matters, item four on the agenda. So we're up to item five, which is reports. And item five point one is attendee report on contact C two O two seven nine, Bridge Road, pavement renewal. Do I have to move on to the recommendation, please? So moved. Councillor Holster and Councillor Milburn, thank you. Councillor Holster.
This is a contract. This is a contract for the Bridge Road pavement renewal. It's all in the recommendation there and the details, so nothing further to add.
Thank you. Councillor Milburn, nothing further than that. Any comments, questions? Councillor Holster to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item five point two is attendee report on contact C two O two seven one, diversified traffic improvements. Now, do I have a mover of recommendation, please?
So moved.
Councillor Holster, do I have a second, then? Our second, Councillor Milburn, thank you. Councillor Holster.
Yes. This area around the caravan park, the restaurants and the car parks, it's made a bit of a dog's breakfast and I believe this will sort it out. Supporting the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Milburn, it would be good to see this project get moving. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Ma'am. Yeah, this item presented to us at the September meeting and there were a few concerns around the table in respect of unnecessary design elements, some of the ramifications of the design elements and they were adequately answered at a workshop on twelve October. And some of those slight changes, which I have no material of them on the cost of the project, can, once construction starts, and one of those will be just one of the points that I mentioned is perhaps a speed hump near the house on the southern side of the road. And I've been, not sure, but I'm told that minor ramifications or minor operations to that extent can be added as the project goes, so I'm confident with that. And we've got a good area on the twelfth of October and looking forward to getting this done, hopefully before summer now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Milburn.
Thank you, ma'am. You know, I'd just like to concur with Councillor Perry in relation to that. Although I would have, I think, Councillor Perry's summed it up, but I would have much preferred taking into consideration this document goes to the public that those minor adjustments or suggestions that were made through that workshop process may have been included in the document. Just so it provides the community with a very accurate picture of what's actually going to occur in that precinct.
Thank you. Anything else to add?
Thank you. Yes, look, I appreciate the fact that we got this to workshop and we're able to really ask the questions and get the answers that we needed. I do have a question through you, Madam Ma'am, perhaps through to Mr Spur in his mudding's head. Thank you. The roundabout we've made, or it was already going to be made, so that if a truck was turning around, they could actually go up and not over the actual roundabout itself. So it's going to be a flatterer's style, I guess, to say very basically. So if we've got some, the word is 'hoons' coming down the hill, going too fast. There's not a speed hump to slow them down. Under that tree, is there? No. Mr Spurby, thank you.
Through you, ma'am.
I'll turn off.
Here we go, through you, ma'am. So in the report, the coloured section around the roundabout is trafficable by heavy vehicles that would be handled and finished. So there is some deterrence to standard passenger vehicles not taking that route. And certainly the offset of the roundabout for the southbound traffic is designed to slow vehicles coming down the hill. So they do have to navigate the roundabout a bit sharper to them than it's currently there.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Laicock.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I concur with the previous speakers. It is a safety issue and usually a bit of a few hoons, I should imagine, trying to go straight through. But basically, it'll stop those people coming up and sort of not sure, having a look in the car park, whether they want to go in or not. I think it'll do a good job for safety and slow the track down quite a bit there. But we do need to pass this tonight, I feel, and move on because we've deferred it once and we're going to get into the really busy season and then it's going to be very difficult down there. Just one question through you, ma'am, to Mr Spurby, if you don't mind. I can see we've got a badge of the tree purchase. Do you know at this stage, Mr Spurby, what sort of trees you're putting in down there? Am I a little bit quick off the mark for that?
Through you, ma'am. We can certainly provide that to the councilors and circulate that information.
Thank you.
So there's trees and also small plantings along the eastern side of Bluff Access Road to go in as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Councillor Hollister, close?
Yes, I fully support this. I think also we need to look at the annual maintenance, because the road from where I believe this work will finish going up towards our house is a bit of a dog's breakfast. So it's something we need to consider in our annual maintenance going forward.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.3 is the draft of the Public Gallery Strategy, the 2021 to 26. Do I have a move of the recommendations, please?
So moved.
Councillor John, do you have a second one?
Second one.
Mr. Alexia, thank you. Councillor John.
Yeah, congratulations on the report. There's a lot of information there. Obviously, it's not changed much from the last time we had a similar report, but I can see that we've really improved environmentally. Our sustainability is getting better all the time, so I'm really proud of that. I'd like to pass that on to the staff. I think we're getting more and more aware of what we've got to do, and it's coming to these strategies about living lightly, as we say in our strategic plan. So I think we're doing it better all the time, and I can see a huge improvement in the last nine years, I think, so well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to concur with councillor John there. It is very crucial, very important that we keep the scheme going and look at improving all the time the technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Councillor John, to close? Consider it closed. Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please stand on. Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.4 is financial assistance, being around 120, 2021, and I note that councillor John, councillor Millburn, councillor Harry, have played an interest in this item. So do I have a move of the recommendation?
You do, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Do I have a second one?
You do.
Councillor Lacob, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Very detailed. Obviously, we had quite a number of applications, both in the minor and major grants. I think it demonstrates council's commitment, an ongoing commitment to supporting community even through this COVID period, and really the council should take the tail off in being able to do so.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy. Councillor Lacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as councillor Murphy's just said, there's a lot going out there, and it's good to see the people have been able to read and see what we're doing for our community. The little packages of 2,500 to a lot of clubs is a really big deal, I suppose, because it's a lot of money, and it enables them to be able to do those smaller jobs around their sporting or their organisations. So well done to the committee, they've done a good job again, and it's good to see some of their cause of assistance with rave remissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I guess I'd just like to note that we've turned this around fairly quickly, so I really want to thank the staff for the work they've done to prepare the reports and get us together so we can make this recommendation, and hopefully, and obviously the intention is to get that money out to those groups as quickly as we can. So I want to acknowledge the work that's been done around that. So thank you. I'll ask councillor to close.
Thank you, Mayor, and yes, you're right to do so in acknowledging the work that the staff have done. Also, it's worth noting that the level of applications is starting to increase, and the detail that's actually been provided on some of those, and encourage those groups or organisations to keep doing so. Having said that, consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Peggles, would you ask the councillors to return? Thank you. Oh, could they, I think. I'll say, okay, for Christmas. Thank you, everyone. We're moving on to item 5.5, which is the Rant Arts Partnership Agreement. There is a recommendation on page 31. Do I have a move of the recommendation?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy. Councillor John.
Probably one of the nicest agreements we've drawn up. I'm really, really pleased that we're doing this. There's been a lot of thought gone into this and a lot of angst out in the community, and I'm not sure why. I think people have got to understand the reasons why we're doing this, and it's for the better and the good of the community, especially for the kids. We've been missing something like this for a long time. Rant Arts has got a really great reputation. They're doing really great things in Onsyston. I'm really pleased that they thought about coming here. Devonport's only going to benefit from having a community organisation like this, a non-profit organisation, coming and utilising one of our prettiest little buildings we've kept, and I can't wait to see what they do. It's just going to be one of the best things we've done in a while. So I'm really proud to be part of this. I appreciate the staff's efforts in getting this put together. Mr. Spurby, Mr. Dobson, and general manager, the backup of the councillors, has just been amazing, and I'm really looking forward to seeing this going ahead and what it can do for the area. If anyone's got a problem with that, give me a phone call.
Thank you, councillor John. Councillor Murphy.
Gee, that could be a hard act to follow, wouldn't it?
I'll give it a go. I agree. It's been very interesting. There's been quite a lot of social media and media around this particular issue. In the short period of time that I've been here, it's probably been one of the most sensible decisions councils ever made, and I make that on the basis that we took some really, really intelligent advice, i.e. from one, Mr. Jeff Dobson. But full credit must go to Rant, the organisation, in the level and professionalism which they presented, and in making the decision and supporting this decision, this is a very, very sensible and proactive approach to the utilisation of community resources. Anyone else to try and misconstrue that in a way that council's not supporting economic growth in this community, well, they may pull their head out of the sand. I won't say where else they could pull it out of. But the thing is, I'd be sitting here as a hypocrite if I turned around, and I supported private enterprises going into a publicly supported building to compete with other private enterprises. So if there was anyone that was probably more vocally not supporting the other alternative proposal for private enterprise going in that building, it was me, and I'll stand by that, because I think the community is going to far, far greater benefit from having an organisation such as Rant, and I'm not an art lover, and I'll admit that. But the thing is, I think for the whole community and for the long term, not the short term, but the long term, this is a far better outcome.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Are there any other comments? Councillor Alexia.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I endorse councillor John and councillor Murphy's comments there. It is a really exciting time for this group to be involved in Devonport, especially with, they did present really well. I'm very proud to have an associate like you in Devonport. It's going to be a real boost for the city and the community, and as councillor John said, for all the children out there as well, this will give them that as well. So it's a winning situation for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I support the three previous speakers, particularly one and two, the comments they made. And along with councillor Murphy, my connection and I guess knowledge of arts and culture would be fairly limited, but I do know that cities and large towns across the world that have a good arts culture are a better city for it, and I know that Devonport, that there's something Devonport, I'm not saying Devonport lacks it, but it's something Devonport can improve on, and something that Devonport could elevate itself to be perhaps the arts city of Tasmania, and that would be an achievement if we're able to get that. Some of the misinformation in the media has been disappointing, some of the mathematical imperfections in some of those articles have been disappointing, but we push on. And it is a good agreement. We're looking forward to the partnership, and I'm looking forward to it becoming a long-term partnership after the initial 12 months, and providing us with an arts culture that could be the envy of other cities in Tasmania. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Perry. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. I always look at this and I think, you know, what can our city offer? What, our community? And by allowing this to occur, and Rant moving to this building, I think it will provide opportunities to make it the best city we can, and provide a much more rounded culture for our city. Not, yeah, not just more rounded, I think, the opportunity for us to do that. But, you know, there's obviously, there's all sorts of things that you could go for, but this one certainly appeals and will benefit a certain group and benefit many others as well.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. Councillor Hollister.
Yes, I concur with what's already been said. I think the art community in Devonport will benefit from this, and I believe the connections from Rant with the rest of the state will be connections that are continuing with Rant. So I think it will be very important and very beneficial to Devonport. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, councillor Lacob?
Thank you, Mayor. For those that are not sure that the Public Gallery tonight are looking in, I'd just like to let them know that Rant Arts is a not-for-profit big arts organisation that's currently based in Onsyston. When we had our workshop, I know everybody basically in this room, part of the Public Gallery, was very impressed with the presentation that was put forward by the co-director, Nathan Tucker, who's here tonight, at a recent briefing. It really did open my eyes. I just want to, I'm sure I'm right here in saying it's not just for children, it's adults there as well, just to clarify that one. And this request, and when this goes through, it does fit in nicely with our strategic plan on cultural facilities and programmes within our city, and I totally agree with what every other speaker has said. It's important to know, for people to know that Rantex is a creative producer, facilitator, administrator, and advocate for the arts. Key priorities for Rant include regional arts, youth arts, not just that, but the health and disability and wellbeing in the arts. Importantly, Rant also administers the Federal Regional Arts Fund for Tasmania, so that is really important. Regarding some of the social media and media comments, we've got to remember there's more to having a good community than the almighty dollar. This is really important, that we do this for people, and I can see we would retain more people, not just within our community, but within Tasmania if we had more facilities like this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lacob. Any other comments? Is there just about a question, councillor Murphy? Councillor John, to close.
Thank you. I'm feeling the luck in the room. It's really nice. I think what we've got to look at is, it's not just for Devonport, it's for the region. This will be a wonderful organisation to have it down here on the North West Coast. It's the perfect, perfect home for them, and I can't wait to see what they do in the future. I certainly will be supporting them in every endeavour. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 5.6, an update on December events. Just receiving a report at the moment. Do I have a move, please?
You do, Mayor.
Councillor Lacob, thank you. Councillor John. Councillor Lacob.
Yes, we all realise it's been a very difficult year, and I'd like to commend Mrs. Hampton and her events team for putting forward the suggestions here for us to take on board tonight. Well done. I think things that we've got the, we need to remember Christmas is about family and it's about children, and we can't be taking everything away. So I think we've got a really good programme there. Something like the Christmas lights to reinstate those we had years ago means families can get after dinner in the car and go for a look and enjoy this as a family, and there's no cost to it. So I think that's really important. So I'm more than happy to support that, and I'm sure everybody else will. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor John.
Yeah, the staff have been working in unusual circumstances. They're doing a really great job in finding alternatives to still bring the festive cheer to the area, even though we can't do what we normally do, have the Christmas parade and have New Year's Eve. It's very, very sad. No one, no one wants that to happen, but we just have to deal with that and work out what we can do and make people aware that we can do things and make it special anyway. So well done to the team, and good luck with everybody going forward, and hopefully we have lots of retailers open and lots of money going around in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Alexia.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I agree with the previous speakers. It's about learning and adapting to the climate that we live in at the moment, and it's definitely changed our lifestyles, and it adds up to Karen and your team. We're constantly looking at ways to improve or to implement certain projects the council can run. I know that our borders are open now, and it's hope, fingers crossed, that everything stays on plan with what we've got at the moment. But yeah, we're just hoping everything goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I agree with all the previous speakers. Clearly, the two major events, the Christmas parade and New Year's Eve, will be compromise events, seeing things improve further than what they are now, given the leading time. And I've got every confidence that our events team, led by Mrs. Hampton, will still generate some mini events, if you like, to create the Christmas atmosphere in Devonport and make everyone in Devonport feel like that Christmas is here. So I'm sure they'll do that, and they'll do well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I'm hoping that the negotiations with Santa's people is going well.
Yes.
That's all. I realize councillor Lacob to close. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very pleased to hear that. I'd be funny at Christmas if Sandy's not coming. I'd just like to bring everyone's attention on page 35 to some of the online activities. Won't go through them, but once again, the staff have worked hard on that. Love the Christmas recipe and the Facebook competitions, and we perhaps we could get some photos of the lights at night and put on online if possible, because that would be very beneficial to those people that might not be able to leave their home to have some Christmas cheer. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6, I guess, information, 6.1 workshops and briefing sessions since the last meeting. Do I have a move, please?
So moved.
So councillor, councillor, councillor.
Merely procedure.
Councillor Ennis.
I'll have a closer look.
Thank you. Any other, any comments, questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Alexia.
Thank you. I just wanted to add there that the Devonport Soccer Club could be hosting the Women's World Cup, and it could be an exciting tournament 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Hollister.
Taswater. Looking in the annual report, it's quite obvious that between state treasury and state government, and Taswater as well, councils have really been penalised. Probably not the right word, but the general manager might just tell us what the difference is as to what council should be receiving from Taswater, and we certainly are not getting much cuts down on council revenue and also causes rate increases overall.
I think that's covered the email and the report as well.
Yeah, just through you, Mayor, just to clarify, yeah, for the 1920 financial year, council didn't receive its final dividend from Taswater, which in our case was worth around just over £5,000. And at this point, Taswater are forecasting there'll be no dividends paid to owners for the 2021 financial year, which in our case is about $1.1 million.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Councillor Hollister. Councillor Lacob, you move to close.
Thanks, Mayor. I suppose just on that point, it's worth noting that fortunately for us, we're going to let the people off the chain, and councillor Perry has been nominated and elected to the Taswater representatives group. So I think someone with his experience and knowledge around this particular issue, and it is an historical issue, I think he will more than, is more than capable of shedding some light on some of these issues that Taswater keep presenting to local government. Having said that, I'll consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item six point two is the mayor's monthly report for October. Do I have a move, please?
You do, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilor Lacob.
Second one.
Councilor Alexia. Thank you. Councilor Lacob.
Thanks, ma'am. It's good to see that you were able to perform the ceremony for new citizens. We have six new citizens in the municipality. Can you tell us what nationalities, whatever they're from? I know that's stretching you. I know.
I know there were five different nationalities.
Right.
I have to come back to you on specific for a second.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm always interested in that, of course. And especially because we have a very vibrant international cafe with our new migrants in our city. So I'm able to follow up with those. Thank you, ma'am. Well done. Hard work this year.
Councilor Alexia.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I was fortunate enough to attend the over fifty years great place lunch with you just recently. And I really enjoyed that. I know you've been quite busy and still attending quite a few events. Well done.
Thank you. I have to say, it's been nice to start getting back to being invited to events and so on. So I have this that. And it's, it's one of the joys of being involved. So thank you. Are there any questions, Councilor Ennis?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to know what character you got dressed up for the book week event?
I pretended I was the mayor, Mr. Ennis.
Well done. Well done.
What books are it? Local government. Guidebook.
That's it. I don't really, it was Dr. Zeus, actually. I don't really have any questions. I can't cover the seriousness of this. Councilor Lacob, close. Thank you. Consider a close. I was going to do. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item six point three is the general manager's report for October. Do I have a move, please?
I'm moved.
Councilor Holliston, do I second that?
I'll second that.
Councilor Perry. Thank you. Councilor Holliston.
Just a report. It's all in there. Interesting reading, but see what he gets up to.
Thank you. Councilor Perry.
Oh, nothing really to add. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd love to make a comment.
Councilor Lacob.
Sorry. Okay. I just want to make note on page forty, it was good to see that our former general manager, Paul West, was awarded life membership of the organisation for his service to local government over a thirty five year period. And he had nine years as a general manager at numerous councils across the state. During his career, Mr. West served as both state president and national president of the local government professionals. And for those that don't know, what I've just read out is huge. That shows you how well respected he was and is within local government. And for those that also don't know, he's back up in our area, which is nice to see. He's re-leaving at Latrobe-Pentish and I think still doing a little bit in that role with Central Coast. So very talented man. And we've sent him all our best. And congratulations on being awarded a life membership. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am. I agree with Councilor Lacob on that point. It's actually quite interesting that she raised that particular issue because it really demonstrates that if one person can be able to manage three different municipalities, it's a really good catalyst for maybe some reform in that particular area if we don't need that many people in positions across the coast, if one person can do it. It's a real credit to it, to be honest. So well done. There's just a general report that Legatse, Dr. Katrina Stevenson, she only met with us sort of fortnight prior to the announcement of the resignation law. It was quite surprising, especially taking into consideration the way that she spoke to us at that workshop. I found that a little bit. And now has taken a role up with another local government role in...
Kingman?
Yeah. Yeah, just interesting. Want to do that one?
Thank you. Councilor Ennis.
Thank you. Mine. I just would like a bit of more detail on the Surf Life in Surf Club Tasmania establishing the northern rescue base at the Mersey Bluff. What does that entail?
Yes, I met with that representative from the Surf Club and this is Surf Life in Tasmania, not the local club. And they'll be writing to council soon with a request to establish a base in Devonport. So I'm just waiting for that letter. Do you think it'll be out of the current building? No, they've got their eye on another building down at the Bluff, just behind the storage shed at the back. And they'd like to put some rescue equipment in there that would service basically the north of the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please, Councilor Alexia.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to point out and thank the general manager for taking us on the site tour of the waterfront park. That was a great experience to see where the project's at at the moment. And it really opens your eyes when you actually walk down to the site and see how much is actually happening down there, where the development is actually happening, what's, how much they've achieved so far. And it's good that they've opened up before we wrote that up again, which is very great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Ennis, did you have something else? Councilor Holliston, close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item six point four is the instruction works department report. Do I have a move, please?
I'm moved.
Councilor Holliston, do I second that? I second. Councilor Murrow. Thank you. Councilor Holliston.
This is just a works report, shows what works have been doing. See good pictures and stuff. So I reckon if you have a venue in a particular area, you can see what's been going on. It looks fairly good.
Thank you. Councilor Murrow.
It's a comprehensive report, so thank you for that. And it's good to see that we're stimulating the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Councilor Holliston, close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Six point five. Six point five, thank you. Development Services Report. Do I have a move with recommendation, please? Councilor Jarman. Thank you. Or second that.
I'll second.
Councilor Perry. Thank you. Councilor Jarman.
Yes, look, all the information's there. It's always a good report to read. It'll be interesting. I've taken part of the Coast authorities cat management strategy. I've offered up my pussy cat for them to put a harness on and find out where she's going and tracking her. So that'll be interesting. I think they've got about twenty animals involved. So it'll be interesting to see how that works. At least they're trying something. So it's not easy to control cats. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Perry.
Nothing further than I used to do to a performance, could be called. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Councilor Jarman to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item six point six is the annual financial report beginning thirty for June twenty twenty. Do I have a move, please?
I'm moved.
Councilor Holliston, do I second that?
You do, ma'am.
Councilor Murphy. Thank you. Councilor Holliston.
It's all in the report. Recommendation is there for everybody in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, look, it's a, obviously been trying times with the situation that we found ourselves in with COVID. I think it's worth noting that the audit general has gone through and provided the the oversight in relation to the financial report and the financial statement. So more than comfortable to move forward from this point on.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions? Oh, Councilor Ennis, sorry.
Yeah, my comment is that, yes, I understand that there's a loss. But what we have to realise is that council has done a lot in supporting our community and people in it. And by us doing that, it's allowed a lot of people to hopefully get along and manage through this difficult time.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councilor Holliston, close.
Yes, it's interesting to read all the projects and the funding of them. It's all in the report. I can refer it to a head.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item seven is section twenty three committees. And as you're aware, they're our events speakers for this period of time. And it brings to a close the open session of our council meeting at half six thirty. I need the motion to move it to high status. So, Councilor Jarman, Councilor Lacob. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you to the members of the public for bringing... Thank you.